Good evening. I'm Kevin Sear, I'm the Deputy First Selectman. I'll be sitting in for Mr. Nickerson today, who has a personal commitment and couldn't be here. The meeting will start with a public hearing on regarding amendment to the regulation concerning the use of golf carts. As soon as we're done with that, we'll move directly into the regular meeting. All those that can, if you could, please join and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Last year, we passed an ordinance allowing golf carts in the beach communities, and if an individual community wanted to opt out, they had the ability to do so. So Crescent Beach came to us at the last meeting, and they had a unanimous vote by their Board of Directors to opt out and not permit golf carts in the Crescent Beach area. So I'll read the posting for the public hearing. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Lime Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on May 20, 2015, at the East Lime Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider an amendment to the regulation concerning the use of golf carts. Said amendment will debate Section 5.1, thereby removing the Crescent Beach community from the list of beach communities authorized to operate golf carts on certain town roads pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 14-300G. Copies of the full text of the proposed amendment are in file for public inspection at the Office of the East Lime Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at eastlinetownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard dated at East Lime, Connecticut on the 6th day of May, 2015, and it was signed by the members of the Board of Education present, and it was published in...
Selectmen.
Thank you. I chaired the Board of Ed for a while, so I just had a little bit of a backslide there. And it was posted in the newspaper as is required. So right now, we'll just be soliciting any comments regarding the amendment restricting the use of golf carts in Crescent Beach. Is there anyone that wants to address the Board on this? Yes, sir.
Well, I guess I'll...
Sorry, I'm sorry. You have to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Daniel Dabo.
You would normally be on TV, but that's not working right now.
I probably gain weight on TV anyways. Daniel Dabo, 8 Hillside Ave., Niantic, Connecticut. I guess my first question would be, the President of our association is here. I would want to know why they turned it down, because there's just so many reasons. I've seen in newspapers that all the associations love having them. I just want to know, like, some of the reasons why they turned it down. I know it was a unanimous decision, but...
Okay, since this is a hearing, that the President of the Association would like to come up and respond to that?
I'd like to wait to hear some more comments, so I can respond to that.
Okay, is that our... That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
You know, I guess what I have to say is that we've had it out for a year now. Has it been a year that it's been open to?
Yes.
And how many... I don't even know that there is maybe three or four of us that have golf carts in the community. It's not like it's overrun right now. It's been a year now, and no one's been overrun with it. Number two, you know, as far as even my parents bought one, knowing, thinking that we could have one. Now, all of a sudden, they just come along and say, "We can't have one." So anyone that did register them last year, maybe you can grandfather those ones in. I'm not really sure. You know, it's easier for her. My mother had a stroke, not able to walk down to the beach. She'll drive down if she has to say something to us, or she'll drive to one of our houses. That's it. Able to park it on the lawn, she's not in the way. I've talked to the police officers here in this town. They told me they'd much rather see all golf carts down on Crescent Beach than just cars. I heard one of the rulings was that, you know, what if one of these golf carts went out of control and went on the beach and hurt someone? There's cars driving in and out of that place that sometimes are running through the stop sign at the corner of Atlantic and Ocean all the time. So that was just, I don't know why they would shut it down. I mean, if anything, you're not making traffic faster, you're slowing traffic down. It's making it safer. And I don't understand how, okay, so they're going to outlaw the use of the golf carts. It's going to put a strain on, if someone is driving that has it registered, that has it insured, and I understand, all right, kids driving on everything. Well, make that a law. Make that a rule, that you have to be maybe 20 years old, and it has to have, if you have to get it registered at the police station, it has to have blinkers on it, it has to have brake lights on it. You have to have insurance on it. It's a registered motor vehicle with these guys. So, you know, with that being said, you have someone that's from Black Point, drives it over to Crescent Beach. Do we have the manpower to give this person a ticket that's driving in our area that doesn't have, that shouldn't be in our area? We don't have it. We don't have it. We don't have it. We use the police station to do that. If you're registered and you're on, we don't own the roads in Crescent Beach. We only own the property. I say, on Crescent Beach property, fine. You don't want them on the beach, you don't want them on a small beach, fine, but in the roads, they're not really bothering anyone. Everything's registered. So, you know, there's been articles published in the J.I., in the New London Day, about the rest of the community liking it. Unfortunately, I wasn't around for the last meeting where they all voted it down. Neither was some of the other people that bought the carts either. And we weren't allowed to say our piece, but they just went amongst themselves, said, "You need this decision, no one wants it." People clapped for it. Well, how about bringing it back to a revote? Maybe some of us can walk through the community and really have a real good vote on this, saying whether we want them or not. I mean, you know, we didn't really get a chance. A lot of the times, we're not always here at the same time. Some of us have to work on the Saturdays that these meetings are. So give us a fair shot at maybe, and I just got noted this Saturday afternoon that this meeting was happening. So maybe just get us a better shot at maybe voting this down. Because, like I said, there's some of us that went out, bought them, saying that was approved, then they just come along and say, "Nope, you can't have them." And for what reason, I don't know. They're not really hurting anyone. They're registered, they're responsible people driving it. And if you have kids driving around and you're doing bad thing, that's called bad parenting. I mean, they can't be doing that. So I would say it starts there. So with that being said, I would think that we don't turn this down, we let them stay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address on this topic? Yes, sir.
Joe Casey, 26 Bayview Avenue, Niantic, Crescent Beach. I'm against the use of golf carts in town, anywhere in town, regardless of Crescent Beach, Black Point, or whatever. Severe safety hazard. Most people are used to seeing cars go by, bicycles. They're certainly not used to seeing golf carts come around. There's no place to park golf carts in a public place in Crescent Beach. And we just feel that they're unnecessary. They're polluting engines.
They're electric.
It's just not necessary. So I think what the Board did was proper, it was correct, and I think it should just stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the Board on this topic? Yes, sir.
Richard Beers, 20 Grove Avenue. I live at the highest point of Crescent Beach. I have a golf cart. I like to go to Lower Crescent and read my paper and have my coffee. I've driven older people home from the beach that couldn't make it back, like last year, Guy Renton. And I just don't think they hurt anything, you know. I mean, if you read all the laws, you have to be a licensed driver, you have to have insurance, you have to have everything that goes along with it. And I just think, I mean, it takes up a lot less space than a car. If you want to go down Lower Crescent, which is a big parking lot that the yacht club uses most of the time, our little cart don't hurt anything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beers. Gentlemen back there, and then after that, Mr. Mingo.
I'm Wayne Blair from 4 Hillside Avenue in Crescent Beach. I've been the past zoning officer for, up till 2011. Dan was also prior to myself. Again, I checked through the existing traffic regulations that are currently in the, I believe, the rules and regulations of our current beach association. Under Chapter 4, and these are under, it says, "Traffic Regulations," Section 8 of the, I said the bylaws, it may be the rules and regs, "Motorcycles, mopeds, bicycles, and other similar motorized vehicles, bicycles, and skateboards is prohibited from all passageways, walkways, and paths within the territorial limits of the association which are not accepted as public highways or roads by the town of East Lime." So within the Crescent Beach Association, we have a regulation, I'll call it, that governs this now. Now, of course, this is pertaining to the roads of East Lime. The roads of East Lime were taken over by East Lime many, many years ago. This, there wouldn't be anything in here about the roads of East Lime, of course, because that's your jurisdiction on it. But it does say, "Motorized vehicles on all Crescent Beach property is prohibited presently." That's number one. Number two, under Section 2 of the Rules and Regulations, "No vehicle shall be parked at any time on any of the streets within the territorial limits of the association unless a permit is granted by the governing board of the CBA, Crescent Beach Association." If golf carts were going to be allowed on the streets, then parking becomes an issue, especially at the beach area. Whereas, it says in there, our regulations now, that they're supposed to get a permit if they're going to be. Again, permits are very, very scarce, I'll call it, because of the existing parking conditions now within the beach area. You can drive along the roadways. I'm not going to say safely or on safely. That's up to the town traffic authority to decide that. But I think parking is an issue also that should be considered on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mingo.
I don't live down the beach, but I'm also disabled. What somebody needs to do is sue the town, because what are you going to do when someone comes in with a disability vehicle? A scooter?
Where does it end?
Where does it end? What if somebody who is disabled, who doesn't have access to the beach? Disability laws require parking for disabled people. It's called the ADA Act. They can't deny someone who comes down in a scooter or a disability vehicle the right to park at the beach. Elderly people need to have access to the water. This is a, this is a community, this is not a, you're dealing with a tourist community. In tourist, you go down to Florida, that's all you see. We need to cater to the people my age who have disabilities. We need these vehicles. There are, where do you draw the line? I mean, I don't know what they call these vehicles that they have in New London. You stand on them.
Segways.
Allow them?
Segways?
Segways. Are you going to stop them? Are you going to stop me from coming down there in my scooter, my disability scooter that cost me $5,000? I think not, because you'll be in for a big lawsuit. You have to cater to the elderly. We have a right to go to the beach. They need to make a pace for in the park. I don't care what their regulations say. It was way done before ADA came in the boot. This town is remiss in handicap parking. If you go to Mitchell's parking lot, it does not meet the criteria of the law by any stretch of the imagination. And that's being dealt with at the state level right now. But elderly people have a right to go to the beach. We have to look at what they do in Florida. They don't have a problem down there. I think we should ban cars from the beach, myself, because the roads are so narrow. Let people walk. Those that can and those that can't, let them have a little cart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mingo. Anyone else like to address? Sir.
I live in O-line, but I own 24 Grove Street in Crescent Beach. I'm a little bit confused, which is probably my own fault. I find that happening more and more as I age. But I, the committee, the Crescent Beach Committee, did they decide this on their own, or was it after a vote of the total community?
From, we'll let Crescent Beach...
I'd like an answer to that later, okay? And lastly, and I'm just listening to some of the issues on the parking and things, it seems to me that a golf cart is going to take up less room than a car. And I don't believe that, you know, we have stickers, permit, permits for automobiles down there. I mean, you know, I've never been told I needed one to park on any of the streets in Crescent Beach. So I don't, I don't quite understand the permitting issue there either. Anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Mike Finger, 6 Diamond Aquil Avenue. I don't think we have, like you said, parking permits or you need park permits to park in the streets anymore. I mean, I remember a couple of years ago, they said, "We couldn't have private, you know, parking anymore because we weren't a private beach." So if the town owns a road, why would we have to have a permit to park on the road to start with? I mean, that makes sense to me. And Lower Crescent Beach used to have a parking permit for that, but now they say you don't need a parking permit for that, so anybody can park in there. And, you know, like you said, with older people going to the beach, I've had two knee operations, my wife's had two knee operations. I mean, in a few years, we might need some, you know, transportation going down to the beach, so walking. I mean, it would be nice to have a golf cart. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Maureen Overcash on 108 Columbus Avenue in Crescent Beach. My concern is also safety. In Crescent Beach, I think there's maybe two streets that allow parking. So the parking is very limited. I think Bayview and, I think there's one other, Hillside, Hillside, are the only two streets in Crescent Beach that allow on-street parking. So the question of whether cars are bigger than golf carts, it's really irrelevant because there's no parking even for cars. But my biggest concern is that Columbus Avenue is like the thoroughfare to Black Point, Adewan, Oak Grove, for all of the construction vehicles, for the new building that's going on, and the traffic that comes down that street is very busy. No sidewalks, children walking. I just think it's going to add to that. And I know that the argument of it slowing traffic down, I understand that, and, but I would be afraid for the people in the golf carts, because some of these trucks that come down Columbus are, they couldn't stop if they had to. They're going way too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, oh, yes, sir. Please come on.
Jack Biscwali, 21 Prospect Avenue in Niantic, Crescent Beach. Excuse me. This issue with golf carts is an emotional one at best. There are good reasons to have golf carts. I live in an elderly community for a couple of months out of the year in Florida, as one of the gentlemen referred to, and we do have golf carts to get around. It's a closed community. Unfortunately, last year, about the time that the Board was taking up the issue of the golf carts, I was walking up to that meeting and came out of Terrace Avenue onto Crescent, and there used to be hedges there, and there was a golf cart going to Black Point that almost ran me over. Because of the visibility issue, the golf carts being low, the, we would like to think that because it's registered and there's insurance and supposedly adults are going to be driving, unfortunately, the reality of it is, is that it's going to be the kids, the grandkids, the visitors coming, and they may not have the same respect of the law that an adult should have. So I have, I'm mixed on it, but at the present time, based on the topography of Crescent Beach and the roadways and the speeding of traffic, if you just sit at any one of the stop signs on Crescent, you can just watch them zip through it. And these are people that actually live here, so I don't see there'd be any difference with golf carts. And in fact, I'd see people trying to pass the golf carts because they are slower. So I think from a safety standpoint, we really need to think about this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the Board on this topic? Why don't you come up?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Casey, President of the Crescent Beach Board of Governors, 17 Ocean Avenue. I think that I just want to remind everybody that what has transpired, which is, I think, why we're here today, which is that when the notice was first made that we were going to, that the golf cart provision, Mr. Formica failed to notify the Council of Beaches, and so we weren't made aware of it. Some beaches were aware of it and some beaches weren't. When we found out about it, I called his office and I asked what we needed to do if we wanted to possibly opt out of the golf cart ordinance. He said that all we needed to do, if the Board took action on it, that we should send a letter to his office stating that Crescent Beach had opted out of it. The Crescent Beach Board of Governors meets Tuesday nights. We met, we meet Tuesdays in April, May, June, the first Tuesday of April, May, June, July, August, September. Anyway, it was during, for the June meeting, that we posted it, no, excuse me, the July 1st meeting, we posted it on our agenda, that we, the new business, we were going to be discussing golf carts. Prior to that, we had talked with the association's attorney, Eric Janney, just to find out what the protocol should be, and he assured us that our charter gave us the right, the Crescent Beach Board of Governors, to act on it as a board, which is why the Board subsequently voted the question, and we didn't take it out to a full membership of the association. So we posted it in the July 1st agenda. It was discussed during the meeting, which is reflected in the minutes. We solicited feedback from the community and overwhelmingly heard that the residents of Crescent Beach were not in favor of the golf carts. During the August meeting, we took action on it, and for the Board members present, everyone was there except for one Board member, it was unanimously voted that we were going to opt out of the golf carts. Following that, I sent a letter to Paul Formica advising that we had opted out of it, followed it up with a phone call a couple of days later to say, "Do we have to do anything else?" He said, "No, you're all set. Crescent Beach is out of it." So we were happy with that. In the August membership meeting, at the end of August, we told the membership during the meeting that we had opted out of the golf cart ordinance. Everybody that was there, they seemed very enthusiastic. A few people clapped at the news. So we thought everything was great, and then, as it turns out, it wasn't, and here we are today. So I just wanted to state a couple additional things. With respect to the, some of the beaches that had commented during the public hearing back in April, Mr. Trip Hartigan, he was quoted as, one of the things that he said that is that the day, the paper had alluded to, "The reason for the golf carts was to help senior citizens and disabled individuals navigate their community. However, nothing in the ordinance limits the use of golf carts to senior citizens or disabled individuals. And the goal of assisting such residents in navigating their community is undoubtedly a worthwhile one, but one which should be addressed by the town with respect to all of its seniors or disabled citizens, not merely those who happen to live in the beach communities. At Crescent Beach, all residents using the beach either walk or cycle from their homes or are dropped off by car by someone who then returns the car to the resident's private property. Golf carts in Crescent Beach would invariably result in golf carts being parked haphazardly and illegally. Excluded from the ordinance presently are Pine Grove, Giant's Neck, Adewan, and Giant's Neck Heights. Crescent Beach requests a similar." We, and for some of the reasons that Dan was asking, safety, which has already been spoken about, we have narrow roads. We did solicit feedback from our membership. Our charter gives us, the Board, the authority to act on it, which we did. And further, and just in conclusion, if Crescent Beach, if this amendment passes, Crescent Beach would like assurance that the East Lime, that East Lime will issue infractions as necessary, as we were told last year that a member would continue to operate their golf cart and alleged that he had called the police department, who confirmed that they would not answer a call regarding the illegal use of golf carts in Crescent Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the head of the Board of Governors before she sits down? Okay, thank you. Any other comments regarding the golf cart issue? Okay, we'll conclude that, and that will be the first agenda item, once we get through with a few housekeeping things at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll move, according to our agenda, we go right into the Board of Selectmen's meeting. And first of all, are there any additional agenda?
Move to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It's closed. And now we'll move on. We'll dispense. We've already done the Pledge of Allegiance. Next thing is additional agenda and consent calendar items. I do not believe there are any. Next one will be the, now would anybody like to speak to the Board on any other matter? We've closed the public hearing on the golf carts, and this is if anybody wants to address the Board on any other items, and it can still include the golf carts. Seeing none, we'll move on.
I'd like to ask you to remind the audience that if they do not speak during delegations, then they don't speak during the regular part of the meeting. So if they're here for any item that's on the agenda that they wish to have input on, now is the time to speak.
Thank you. Now, you will not be allowed to speak during the Board's discussion of any of the items on the agenda, such as, yes, Joe?
I'd like to speak to an item on the agenda.
Please.
How you're handling this property up on the hill?
Joe, would you like to come up?
Is this the time to talk about the property up on the hill?
This is anything that's on the agenda for tonight, or any topic that you would like to address the Board on? We already...
Mr. Mingo, I've got to be careful what I say here because of the Boards and Commissions that I sit on, because there's litigation involved in this. But I do want you to know that I'm President of the East Lime and Niantic Land Conservation Trust, and we have, we have some great interest in this particular piece of property that trying to put into open space. I had an opportunity to walk this property. There was an application for a wetlands permit to allow some lumber to be taken off the Waterford property and cross this property, and I had an opportunity to walk this whole piece when I was a little healthier. The particular piece of property is gorgeous. If you look at the topography of this particular property, you have in it is a brook called Gurley Brook, which is essentially one of three headwaters of the Niantic River. There's extensive wetlands up there, which are very, very critical to maintaining the water quality in the Niantic River. You have Poliwog Brook, which comes along, I believe it's Mill Road, which empties into the bay. You have Gurley Brook, that empties into the bay, and we have Latimer's Brook that empties into the bay. Now, the topography of this particular piece of property, if you stand on the hill, there are two directions that the water flows. One, into Gurley Brook, which enters into the Niantic River down in the bay, and the other part of the property, the watershed empties into Latimer Brook. The land trust is presently looking into acquiring some property along Latimer's Brook right now, which has 1,800 feet of frontage on Latimer Brook, which essentially will be able to protect the whole headwaters of the Niantic River, Latimer Brook, Gurley Brook, and perhaps we can do something with the town of Waterford and get some protection on the Poliwog Brook. It's essential, if you look at this in terms of Oswego Gachi Hills, it's a continuation, except for the highway, which when they put the highway in, they cut off, they cut off the continuity of the property from Oswego Gachi Hills, although the topography, if you look at the elevation on this particular piece of property, it's probably within a few hundred feet. I'm not even sure. It might be the same as Oswego Gachi Hills. I really don't know. don't know. I haven't looked at a topography map to see what the elevation of the property is. But in, in my opinion, being on the wetlands commission, this particular piece of property needs to be preserved. Right now, they can put a housing development up there, no problem. It's a zone for that, as far as I know. I did walk the whole piece of property. It's a gorgeous piece of woodland. At one time, it's probably one of the healthiest forests that I've ever ran across. It has very, very, when I walked it, had very, very little invasive species on it. It's a very, very healthy forest, and it needs to be preserved. But what we need to understand is that we need to preserve the Niantic River. Pollution comes in, in various forms and from various places. Believe it or not, most of the pollution in the Niantic River comes from the Waterford side, not the East Lime side, because it comes from fertilizer, where people like to have green lawns. And that's, that's a known fact, and that's been proven by both the federal government and, save the, and Fred Grimsy and company, because I was on that committee. So, a lot of, there's a lot of pollution that comes from runoff from fertilizer, one of the biggest threats in the Niantic River. And the other threat is, is if you look at the Golden Spur, it's very rapidly filling up with silt coming down Latimer Brook from unscrupulous people who don't know how to protect the land. There's a tremendous problem with silt coming down Latimer Brook, and someday, this is going to have to be addressed. The Golden Spur's going to have to get dredged. We're going to do it at one point in time in the past, but somebody ran out of money. So, what I'm urging here is that the Board of Selectmen take a real hard look at preserving this property. We have, the land trust has, without divulging what I consider executive information, a way of coming up with about a million dollars, which we might be able to reimburse the town for the money they invest in this. And certainly, we want to, to buy some of the property in this particular area. But there is, there is a shot at almost a million dollars that we can grab our hands on through grants and, some, some, I don't really want to give away what it is that we're going to try and do, but we're working on something that should give us about a million dollars in cash. Might take us a year to get it, but we're going to have some money to, to complete this whole, this whole project and, and put this whole area under conservation easements. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else like to address the board?
I'd like to address Bruce.
Please come up to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address.
Bruce?
No, why don't you get up to the microphone?
Bruce Dassinger, Bruce Dassinger, at 12 Stone Cliff Drive, Niantic. I'm concerned about the property. Did you hear me?
Excuse me, excuse me, Joe, Joe. Please, please give the courtesy to the man speaking.
12 Stone Cliff Drive, Niantic. I'm interested in the property Mr. Mingo talked about, as it's, as to how it's going to be cultured, as far as the trees goes. I understand it's going to be managed, I saw in the paper at least, by the, the Northeastern Forest Foundation. Is that correct?
New England Forestry Foundation.
Oh, New England Forestry Foundation. And it's going to be managed according to the right practices, I assume. I'm not sure. I haven't read all the practices. I'm concerned about the land birds that nest in these habitats, and whether the culture and the use of the property, which is going to cover some forest, cutting of trees, I would imagine, and how that's going to affect the animal life, and particularly the bird life. As far as the birds go, this is a lot of interior forest in this property. It's a deep forest. Many birds that are in deep forest are only there because they could escape the predation of edge birds like crows, like cowbirds, like other birds that eat birds' eggs or the young, whatever. So, many of these birds nest near the ground or on the ground, and it's according to the practice of whether you're going to remove understory or not, whether they will be affected. Many of the birds also nest in cavities...